Yeah, where's your gap?
I'm ready. Ready to write.
Okay, the introductory roll call.
Hi, Senator Harry Thomas. President.
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 I'm here.
Treasurer Prince.
Here.
Trustee Dom.
Present.
And trustee ever.
Trustee.
Trustee. I thought it was getting very sneeze for a moment. I would use.
So the conservation ethic. I'm gonna read goal six and then I'll ask Sean to read goal one. Foster conservation ethic among Henry County citizens, help in all of us, regardless of the basis of our interest and nature to develop a greater awareness of our role. A greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the whole community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a world duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is a man who recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space.
Thank you, Bill. Goal one, preserve native plants and animals, geological features and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in Henry County, and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
There's now 5.0, our conservation stewardship pledge. All that's.
Okay, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, the way of life in Henry County. The quality of life in Henry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully develop cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number two, we will protect and restore wetlands, streams, and rivers, which helps us to use flood.
Much. Next order of business is to adopt the agenda. So I'm comfortable with the agenda.
It's a consent agenda.
Well, this will be the agenda for the whole meeting.
Okay.
Which includes the consent agenda of the board of business. So does anyone have any discussion about the agenda in front of us? And then we call it all, please.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Did someone move in second? Did I hear?
We didn't have that. I was gonna say, well, we need probably. I'll move that we adopted a check.
That's seconds. We repeat the roll or it's?
We already did.
We did.
Okay, the election of officers. So first up is nomination for president. Who's also the gift ban officer and ethics officer.
Oh, nominee.
I was very excited and had seconds. I was told I have to repeat this three times. Any nominations for president? Once, any nominations for president? Once, and the third time, any nominations for president? Then we'll have a vote.
We need a motion, the nominations for president.
Okay, motion to close.
I'll move.
And second. It's appropriate, Alex, for a roll call.
Trustee Dom.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
And Ozinko.
With some trepidation, I say yes.
Congratulations.
Nominations for vice president.
I nominate Chris Dow.
Got a second. Second. As long as the second. We're gonna dispute the question. Nominations for vice president. Any additional nominations for vice president? Third and final call, any additional nominations for vice president? I have a motion to close the nominations for vice president, Ray. And the second. And the roll call, please.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Vice President Dom. Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
And nominations are open for treasurer. Anyone like to make a nomination? Just allow me to have it. And second, right, as the second. What do you call any additional nominations for treasurer? Second time, nominations for treasurer. And the third time, nominations for treasurer. Would anyone move that we close the nominations?
So moved.
One second.
Second.
Second, thanks. And roll call, please.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. And next is the nomination for secretary. Open that to the floor.
I nominate Linda.
Linda Thomas. And the second.
A second.
Someone has the second. Turns out Linda here. Like it or not, Linda.
Yeah, you're not here. That's what happens in a show, right?
So I'm gonna ask again, any nominations for secretary? And second time, any nominations for secretaries? Last time, any additional nominations for secretary? Did someone make a motion to close the nominations?
I move the nominations to close, I'll second that.
Okay, and the roll call.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. Right much, everyone. Next is trustee outreach assignments. Particular assignments for you all in mind. You may be looking for volunteers at some point for this.
Will you make an update the list or?
Well, yeah, so there are obviously trustees that have left if they resign, if individuals want to take on a different responsibility, that's open. And really though, as president, that's to your discretion of letting the volunteers and who do you want to place where.
Well, I know that FREP is one that comes up on a regular basis and number of anyone expressed an interest in Black River agency. So if not, I'll give it some consideration. And that someone asked if they would be willing to do it. Or how are you? Any kind of council authority?
Yeah.
And there's a Kishwaki organization. But you'd like to stay with that?
Yeah.
And I think Linda has been on the foundation. It's our representative. And I don't know if she's expressed the willingness to do that or.
I sort of wonder if we should get a list and then maybe table this a little bit, so.
Right.
I think a scientist next month or something.
Well, let me play to get me a list of positions that you think we need to fill and then we have the council of governments, we have Kishwaki.
There's green drinks.
Green drinks.
The Bureau and.
Right.
If we can have a sense that that might be one.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, well, we'll try to finalize this on an informal basis. All right, so now that's appointing the secretary, Crowtown. And I asked Ray if he would be willing to do that. So he was graciously volunteered, sure he's using good voices.
Right, his arm got twisted.
I don't think, I don't think we have.
No motion in the second and.
Over that?
Since they're gonna be assigning an official in this.
All right, so.
That we appoint, ready is Secretary Crowtown.
Okay, in a second, I'll second that. And the vote, please.
All right, Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Trustee Gayton.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. I don't know if we have any special recognition presentations, but I I do see a couple of people in the audience. I know Vern quite well. Vern is the one most responsible for me trying to be a trustee and then obviously eventually winding up where I'm sitting, so I want to acknowledge his, his presence and his kindness and support of me in that. This other gentleman I recognize.
I'm Don Greitmaker from Rainwood, Illinois.
Wonderful. Are you planning to make a comment later?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Then next are trustee reports, if anyone has anything specific that they'd like to report on, if you need to attend it or updates on anything. Okay, don't say anything else going on. Okay.
Yeah, I did attend the CAG. I was my, my first in attendance of that meeting. It was a nice down at the Steak Yacht Club, so very interesting. The yacht club is, is in the process of being rehabbed. Anyone's been down there. It's a very old, old building and kind of cornerstone of that community, so it was really neat to kind of learn the history of, of that. That, that club and they, they used to, you know, raise sailboats on, on that length of, like there. It was, it was pretty quick. There wasn't a lot of speaking, I guess, at this one. I'm not sure if they go in depth more. I'm sure Elizabeth say that, but really the, the Johnsburg spoke and they were just kind of thankful for local partnerships that they have in the community and really just thank all of us for being there and supports of, of that committee and it was really kind of quick, but it was a, it was a nice evening. I enjoyed my, my first outing there with the council of governments, so.
Right, we look forward to more.
Yeah, yeah, so I enjoyed that. And before the meeting, I just want to make one more comment that I just, I was you know, telling Christie that, you know, I think she's, she's done a great job at kind of coming in and making her position her own and I've noticed the difference as a trustee that continue every month, it seems she starts making you know, my, my volunteerism here just easier, easier to, to get into stuff, easier to read, and I just want to appreciate her for, her efforts lately. It's, it's noticeable. I, I call it forward thinking. She's almost one step ahead of me and I'm like, yes, that, that does make it easy, so thank you for that.
Piggyback on that because you're gonna see when we get to the consent agenda that it's been quite concise. And I think I understand what was, but the trustees gets the blame or the praise.
It's the responsibility.
I think that's the phrase for improving that, that improvement. Okay. So now we're we're not saying that the county telling you that.
Not much. Last week, we had our meeting and we approved new county board rules and there were some changes updated a little bit. We also voted to approve how, when, once we're elected in November, who gets the four, four, two term and who gets the two, four, four term. Since there's only ten years and there was some discussion about that. And then just to let you guys know, my vote really wasn't working Thursday night when we were meeting. When, when Elizabeth brought up, up the ARBA requests, I know you guys are voting on that. And we, as a county and finance department, are not looking at, I'm not finance department, I mean, it's many, are not reviewing any ARBA requests July and August because they're just taking a step back to make sure everything that comes in, gets in, they're gonna evaluate, and then I think we'll start looking at, looking at them again in September. At least in finance, but I'm sure Verona and the finance departments looking at everything, but we're just keeping finance opinion.
Thank you. I don't have anything specific to report on 11.0. I'd like everyone to know that answer my phone as best I can and please feel free to communicate with me however you wish and critique me or to give me advice because open advice. Beyond that, we have a member of the public. Yeah, for once, so we're happy to hear from you.
Now?
Yes.
And my name is Don Greitmaker. I know Chris and old Pat. I have managed to fertilize a plant of Richmond over forty years. Very familiar with what you seeded for what you seeded to protect our nature. Probably identify eighty percent of your property. My question is there's a piece seeded next to me in Hebron. And I talked to Elizabeth about this. Martha Goose Lake was seeded in spring 2021, winter seeded, never touched since until I asked Elizabeth about weeds. So there is weeds, just all out there, all went to seed as Patton and the Christmas, I was worried, you can't let weeds go. They did mow it and the excuse he gave me was it was too dry or it was too wet, they couldn't do it. I'm a farmer, too dry or too wet, everyone here planted their crops. That's terrible. Now it's been mowed, the weeds are now this big, solid. And this is solid, mares there. And thistles. And when I grew up, my father had a thistle permission. Chris, your dad did too. And whatever happened to that?
Yeah, I don't know what that.
That's certainly an infectious weed.
Through the colony or something?
Well, the county enforced it. I mean, your father and my father were going fine if they didn't take care of the weeds. So some of the property that you manage, and I don't know what control you have here as a board, I think it's done very well, but other properties are just fields of weeds. And that field is going to weed, weed, and I know you seeded it, but the weeds will take it over. And what's gonna happen to it six weeks from now when weeds are this big and y'all was eating it? I was just a big friend of mine.
Well, we appreciate your taking the time to come and inform us. I don't know that we have responses of board, but
Well, I know you don't.
We are going to talk to the people who are directly involved and find out from them what has happened.
Yeah.
And see if we can improve improve our performance going forward. I mean, that.
Well, that's just one piece. I mean, I, like you said, because I was in ag business for so long, I know, probably know a hundred percent of these, I'll just say eighty percent. And overlooking all of them, some of them ran very well, some of them not at all. For the same scenario.
Right.
That was my main concern. My second thought was, if we're all conservation minded and I am conservation minded, to protect waterways and use our land to the best ability. In today's world, this is an open end question. Have you ever been approached by the my mind is, my age catches up with you, the solar power people to put solar power panels on your land? Because up there in Richmond where you have the biggest plot, the on Keystone Road 31, and you have a substation right there. Why can't the conservation district be used for solar panels? And not take prime foreground, more prime foreground. You don't use it raining else, it's just sitting there.
Well, I know that issue is under discussion. I don't know directly as applies to Glacial Park, but in other parts of the county, we are adjacent to or and solar development is going on and so our natural resource department I think is evaluating each individual situation and our relationship to it. So.
It, it just seems to me.
Being as a member of the public to, to ask us are we thinking forward, forward thinking regarding global warming, energy, wind, solar, whatever, recycling? I mean, the answer to that is yes, but as far as specifics, I'm not, I don't have.
Well, I don't need specifics answers, but. I mean, you see down in Kelp County is taking, my understanding is twenty-five hundred, five thousand acres of prime dirt on production of a dairy in Wisconsin, they're taking prime dirt on production for solar panels. We have property in this county that's not being used for anything except preservation and, and conservation and to me, that's perfect, perfect fit if you, if you've never been approached. How many other thoughts I had for that? I just want to come and say my piece again.
Yeah.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
And any trustees?
I thought on the solar panel, we've been kind of been approached. That sounds bad with probably. Yeah, that's already, I mean, that question was raised already by.
But so I think there is some.
We've been looking at it. We do know there is some in areas of the county where we're neighboring, we're having conversations, but nothing specifically has been identified based on size and scope, but it's something under consideration.
I mean, the Byron Towers are gonna shut down. They've used your life and they're beyond their life and they're gonna shut down I don't know, soon, pretty soon. And that's why the big solar panels are going to be held. It's not gonna be known.
Yeah, what counts. You know, I've worked in for the government. I've done a lot of work with contractors that do solar. And unfortunately, the Midwest, especially Chicago, is like one of the worst areas for solar. You know, per panel, the kilowatt that they get out of it sometimes just doesn't make sense. You know, there's, there's certain areas of the country where it's really worth doing solar panels in the Midwest. It almost isn't worth the cost of the panel for what you get out of it. And the other issue with solar right now is the fact that there's no recycling programs for solar panels and they have a life expectancy. And I feel that for conservation issues that we're gonna put a panel out, we should also be thinking thirty years from now when the panel's dead, there's no programs right now to recycle solar, there's no. So, you know, those just they, they're dumping them in landfills. It's, it's a big problem, so.
I understand that, but, but you're almost being mandated to do something.
Yeah, wind is, wind is great out here.
The technology's not there with wind.
Yeah.
I was pretty vile winter with my house.
Yeah, it's way nice. Thank you, Bill, sir.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
We will follow that up.
Okay.
Take care.
Mr. Fund. Vern, yes. Yes, sir, please.
Okay, I just wanted to, as a citizen in the Henry County, come to thank all of you for spending five years of your life working here as volunteers. It's, it's a job a lot of people don't realize it looks into. Having been there, I have walked into shoes, and so I just wanted to say thank you. I want to congratulate the board members under positions and bill. Congratulations, you're a privilege, so.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So now that we're going to approve the consent agenda. And is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Is there anything that anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda? Now, Elizabeth, should I ask Ray to, to read this?
He's gonna move it forward, yes.
Okay, so right.
I move to adapt the consent agenda. Read the whole thing. Thirteen point one approval of minutes of previous meetings, thirteen point one A, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting executive session. Thirteen point one B, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-second, regular meeting. Thirteen point two, acceptance of the treasurer's report. Thirteen point two A, acceptance of the treasurer's report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as presented. Thirteen point two B, acceptance of the investment report FY twenty twenty-three, order one. Thirteen point three, resolution number twenty-two dash forty-seven, resolution ratifying the executive director's authorization to amend conservation grazing lease at POV dash five parcel. Thirteen point four, resolution number twenty-two dash forty-eight. The resolution awarding a contract to Chicagoland paving contractors incorporated of Lake Zurich, Illinois, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the HMA resurfacing of McCollum Lake Road on Route one twenty Smith.
They need the entertaining agenda.
You've been doing great. Point is, what you're reading from is like the previous edition of the consent agenda, which will be included in the official report. But we decided to do a more abbreviated agenda.
You guys do?
Our officers have this. You'll get one of the meetings, those that are reading have.
All right, where was it?
Thirteen point.
Thirteen point four. McCollum Lake Road to Route one twenty in McHenry, amount not to exceed three thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars. Thirteen point five, resolution number twenty-two dash forty-nine, authorizing travel expenditures for the American Society of Landscape Architects Conference for senior landscape architect Rumo, not to exceed three thousand five dollars. Thirteen point six, resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen. Thirteen point six, resolution number twenty-two dash fifteen, authorizing release of listed executive session meeting minutes. Thirteen point seven, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-one, authorizing destruction of listed verbatim recordings of executive session meeting minutes. Thirteen point eight, authorization to begin negotiation process on the listed expiring joint grassland venture leases of seven parcels containing approximately three hundred and thirty-six acres. Thirteen point nine, authorization to begin negotiation pro- process on the listed expiring agricultural leases of fifteen parcels containing approximately nine hundred and nineteen acres. Thirteen point ten, authorization to begin negotiation process on the listed expiring crop land leases of five parcels containing approximately a hundred and ninety-three acres and convert them to joint grassland venture leases. Thirteen point eleven, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-two, to pursue a partnership with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for and America the Beautiful grant funding for Alden Sedge Meadow. Thirteen point twelve, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-three, authorizing a partnership with the Friends of Hacknate and open lands on the Congressional Community Grant for Wetland Restoration on Property adjoining Glacial Park. Thirteen point thirteen, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-four, awarding a contract to LF George H for two Loch Ness seventy-one pound forestry mulchers not to exceed sixty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Thirteen point fourteen, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-five, appointing Carolyn Moon Campbell as a director August twenty twenty-two through January twenty twenty-fifth, or sorry, January twenty twenty-five to the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. Thirteen point fifteen, resolution number twenty-two dash uh, fifty-six, authorizing the executive director to send a letter of support for the Lake in the Hill Sanitary District, ILEPA three nineteen grant application. Uh, thirteen point sixteen, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-seven, authorizing the executive director to submit a twenty twenty-three OSLED grant application to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. Thirteen point seven, resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-eight, ratifying the application submitted to the Advanced McHenry County American Recovery Plan Act Grant Program for the Prairie Trail s- streambank stabilization and renovation project for a total of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Um, can we have a second for motions to approve the consensus?
Second.
Next, um, and now the rule, please.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
President Frick.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Gage.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes. Okay, um. Very good. Now, other board business, and we're going to go on then to treasures, motions. Um, is that, are there any invoices that trustees wish pulled? I, I, I was going to pull invoice um number five, six, four, one, seven, four, one. It's six items totaling three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. Leave it to Euclid managers. That's the only one that I noted, just because I didn't recognize what that was all about until kind of.
Bill, I uh, this afternoon, I sent three in to Elizabeth, not knowing the process. So I sent that in. She's responded immediately. Um. You know, like I said, it was last one. I just was thinking of it today, and so I did. Uh, but I do have three invoices that I've been communicating with.
So we'll keep those three out and the one that I mentioned. And beyond that, I'm going to turn it over to Pat to make the appropriate motions.
Okay, uh, fourteen point one B, consideration to approve the payment of cancer of FS indicated on submission of bills pending report for the period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, to the motion.
So that come.
I'll say.
Crystal second then, and roll, please.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
Senator Frick.
Yes.
President Gage.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
I do have a question for clarification. So we had a conflict in the past with ConservFS, and that's why we separated it purposely on the agenda uh, from the bill's table. And I'm just wondering, uh, do we have, is that a continued, like, nobody else has refused themselves, so can that be commingled back together?
I was going to ask that, actually. I know his child was involved on the board, et cetera. That's probably the reason.
Probably don't need it. We probably don't know bills.
We can, we can go together and if there's another conflict that shows up, then we can separate that one out. Um, but otherwise I can move it as one motion going forward.
I would certainly think that, so.
Yeah.
All right, so um. We don't have the motion.
You do need to do the rest of the motions you just did, ConservFS, so.
Oh, yeah.
They're separating.
One C.
Okay, fourteen point one C, consideration to approve the bank, the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
And the rule, please.
And then, trustee Gage.
Yes.
Senator Frick.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
Vice President Dom.
Yes.
And President Cook.
Yes. Then, I think fourteen point two is also a motion.
Okay, climate building, existing condition analysis, consideration, promotion to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-seven, awarding a con- contract to Studio two-two-two Architects. Or fifty-seven, awarding a contract to Studio two-twenty-two Architects of Chicago, Illinois, conducted climate building system conditions analysis for a cost not to exceed seventeen thousand six hundred.
Second, please. This fifty-seven, it is?
Yes.
On the blue sheet, it's fifty-nine.
So it is fifty.
This is a discussion we had um, last week. But I think, you know, it's time to vote on it, and so, yeah.
Second, another second.
All right, so can we call the roll on the authorizing this study?
Uh, Vice President Dom.
Yes.
President Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Gage.
Yes.
Senator Frick.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes. Wonderful, okay, um. Now, the executive directors report.
I really do not have any additional items to share with anyone. All of these additional reports are in your packet. So if there were any specific questions, um, we're entering the third year of the strategic plan. Uh, so you're seeing quarter one, um, the project status of where we're off just to start of the first fiscal year, so we still haven't received vehicles and things, and you'll see how those are tracking throughout the year. We have our dashboard, uh, which shows the attendance total and activities. Uh, there is, I just do want to mention our natural resources team, they are experimenting with a new dashboard um, that we'll be sharing with you, that is all through uh, GIS and just some time data, which is uh going to be a very nice add and uh, some information. So we'll be giving you links. Probably getting a link and be able to share some of that, so you can go in and look at that, but that'll be coming out to you. And then you've got the news updates, the foundations report, and um the one report that we're going to start doing again, just looking on the, on the efforts of trying to streamline is your ADA, American with Disabilities Act report. We're going to move to that being an annual report. There's not a lot of movement um, that happens on that report to showcase that order, so that'll be an annual report.
No, I, I had a question as I reviewed the strategic plan, and it's something that I know you know, has been discussed, but I couldn't remember the details, and then I saw it in red and it had been sort of uh, stopped. And that had to do with that gas monitoring, John, the uh was it the usage of gasoline or the pricing of gasoline? We were looking at this, a di- a different uh, system, and then we just decided to
Yeah, just replace the.
Sort of table that.
Yeah, the district's fueling stations that we have out there. The district has uh, six different stations throughout the county. Uh, and the uh, the system is old and needs to be uh, replaced. I just got an email the other day from uh, one of the staff members uh, bemoaning the fact that, you know, that we're having connectivity issues and problems, but it's the one that, the worst ones at Region One. Uh, the shop that we were talking about the other day, uh, extensively. Um, and uh, we just uh, set it aside and didn't budget for it, uh, because it didn't seem to be any interest from the board of trustees to move forward on that, so.
Well, that was one of the things that I wanted to be sure that it wasn't, that the board dropped it. I mean, if, if you think it's a, a priority, then maybe the board shouldn't just drop it because we were tired of talking or whatever.
Well, I thought there were some vendors, we were going to look at some vendors that actually supply some of that equipment.
There's, there's, there's a different system out there that we did look at, we found late in game um, in, in the process there, um. We found a local uh, organization that I think is a village of El Donquin that we do do. Uh, the manager, Perry, we worked with manager of the operations, and I just talked about it about a week and a half ago. And I said, why don't you reach out to uh, El Donquin and find out how they're doing? And, because they've had a couple, at least a year, if not two, experience with it. Uh, just, just so we have that information, and uh, I don't think he's had a chance to do that yet, but uh, so, and then the the problem with this, that is, is it's an all or nothing. If we do the switch, we go through all the stations and do all of them, because it's a different technology, it's a different software package, it's a different hardware package. Everything has to be changed out. It's not like if that one goes bad down on that end of the county, we can just go in there and put a different one in.
Well, may I ask, what, what type of information are you wanting to get from this, or what, what's, what's the purpose, so?
Uh, what it does, um.
So you're tracking gallons?
Yes, it tracks what comes in, it tracks what goes out. Um, and so.
For vehicle and.
You got it, yeah, per vehicle, per user, um, and, and most importantly, it tracks when fuel is delivered, and then, and then the other critical thing that it does is it tells us when it's getting low, so we know to then order for that particular station wherever it happens to be.
Okay, yeah, there are some vendors that we're not using now, but that actually supply that with their. Yeah, they give them a thing on the tank. Yeah, it, it's a. Tells you when you go. A company called PetroCam, a couple other different companies that.
That, that is.
So we might have to switch vendors for fuel, but it might get.
We might be able to, we have not explored that. We've not, uh, in fact, in, in uh, August, we'll be coming back to you with uh, with our fuel bids for the year.
Well, now is maybe the time to.
Well, what, I, I believe the bids are already announced.
So we have to imagine the bid, which could be done, but I don't know how that's going to affect.
Well, well, yeah, I don't, um, I I would be interested to know more about that, but if it's, but what, again, what we are looking for is that accountability. I mean, this but understand, this is not, this is not necessarily an operations need. It is an accounting.
Sure.
It is, you know, one of the largest expenses that we have out there, commodities that we have out there. So therefore, being able to, for you folks to be able to defend to anybody that's asking, yes, we know where, you know, we know where our gas is going. We know that this individual pumps this much gas into that vehicle and, and that makes sense. And so those are the things we're getting as well as then, how are, you know, uh, knowing that the, the gas tank is, is running out in uh, in Prairie View Education Center without the staff having to go out and tap on it and, you know, stick it to make sure it did, so.
Well, I mean, I brought it up because I didn't, I couldn't remember the details of the discussion, and it's not something that's in my wheelhouse. But I wanted to be sure that the board of trustees, and we have members of the board who are, are quite knowledgeable, you know, private sector about some of these issues. So uh, if there's a need, whether it's for accounting or, or your department, um you know, then I feel we should assemble the data and make a, a decision to address it. You know, whether we get it addressed as two weeks or two months, uh, but to see it in that report with the red, you know, sort of designation that, well, we stopped talking about this. You know, it just made me think that, uh, well, we, perhaps we need to talk about it again, so.
If we had a catastrophic failure, I'd be sitting back in front of you saying, I need fifty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars to go ahead and do this, whatever that number is. That we, we do want to explore, and I can't remember Fluid Secure, I think, was the name of the, of the company that was providing this very simple system. And that was very attractive to it, to us, because it looked like something we could put in and then we could install, we could manage without having to call the third party in, which is problematic, you know, down, down the road, so. Um, we wanted to, we did explore that, we liked it, uh, it was new. Um, and at that point in time, uh, always decided that we not move forward with it, so.
Yeah, and the past discussion was that internally, accounting, it wasn't operations, you could go back to manual, everybody writing down sheets, but then you have some somebody has to add all that stuff up, that again shifts the expense onto accounting to someone to do that type of manual work, and then there was discussion um, about the loss, if there was loss, how much you were spending compared to what a loss seemingly would be and is there a return, but the public perception of us managing and tracking a commodity, particularly looking at the cost of, 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 of fuel at this time. And their technology, I think, keeps improving. So that last piece that El Donquin was beta testing. Again, we have a time pocket management system that's all on your smartphone, it seemed to operate under similar as with blocking in and, and size fuel access that.
Well, I, I'm just gonna say, Chris, if you have the time and you're willing.
I can look into some.
Perhaps you can be in discussions with John and Perry, and then at some point, uh, we'll hear back from you.
Yeah. And also, I, I want to make sure that uh, you guys maybe develop a plan where uh, what happens, it, can you get fuel out when the power goes down? Do you have emergency contingency side of that? Normally we do. Where's going, where's they going to be asking?
Yeah, that, that's, that's your.
Yeah.
That's safe, thanks. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, John, that, I mean, the blind side, and I appreciate your, your.
I'm surprised I remembered it. At least I, I hope I remember the details of it. Quite a discussion.
Um. Okay, so uh assignments and reports, we sort of discussed that and I'll be trying to elaborate on that a little bit more. Um, our public has gone. Is it appropriate to have a motion to adjourn? Does anyone have anything they want to throw up on the table?
There, there's no one online.
I do want to make one more comment.
Sure.
Forgot to have this. So my son, my young son, he attended camp last week here at the Conservation District. And he had an amazing time. The quality of the camp was exceptional, right? The amount of stuff that they exposed the children to to conservation environment was just amazing, so just a testament to our director here, that she's got such great experience in the recreation field. And obviously, amazing experience in conservation and. And obviously, amazing experience in conservation, and just to be able to marry those two together, I think. This is something that you just don't see in a lot of places, so. You know, thank you.
Kind of a fan.
You know, kids or grandkids, you know, they, they taking these, taking these summer camps, it's just, it's just such a benefit to.
Yeah, it's fun to see them while you're.
It is, because it's not like day camp, you know, it's, it's different than that, and they get so, I feel like they get so much more out of it. Um, here, so thank you, Elizabeth, for another great, great program, things, just thinking of things outside of. The open spaces that we care for. There's other things that this Conservation District does that, that has its own value added to the team.
Exhilaration. Because I, I guess I have a question. The gentleman that came down from the heat burn area, how should we handle that, or how? How does that get handled? In other words, he's unhappy, and the question is. Perhaps gonna not be satisfied ever, but, um, can we get some type of follow up so that, um. There's a paper trail that says we've addressed his concerns, and, you know, we're trying to do the best we can.
Absolutely. So I did speak with Mr. Redocker. Chris, thank you. Pressy Donnich sent him on to me. I followed up. Uh, our team from Land Administration, Land Preservation, did have a conversation. Clearly, um, it appears, and I need to follow back up, obviously, he wasn't happy with the response, felt that we should do more. I will need to have a conversation with staff again to follow up, and then I would suggest that I do a formal, you know, communication once I look into it further. And then that would be, copy that to the board on, you know, that correspondence, what the issue is, and what was identified. I believe it's done by Goose Lake. Ed, um, for the board, if you're still on, I don't know if that's something, one, since your team was directly, um, engaged in the conversation.
I'll just make a couple of, uh, brief remarks, and then I'll ask Brad to comment. Um. There's a couple of things going on there the board should know. Uh, one is that we are restoring that through a grant from McHenry County. Uh, it's a McHenry County, uh, stormwater wetland grant, and that grant has, uh, standards. That we have to come up to in order to be reimbursed for the grant. Uh, the other thing you should be aware of is planted during a drought. Uh, to mow young prairie plantings during a drought is not a particularly good idea. Um, and this year, we had rains early that prevented us from getting out there. Uh, but we have mowed it since then, and it is scheduled to have a second seeding. Uh, we often only do, uh, a light first seeding when we have concerns about chemical carryover. From the, uh, the last crop that was on it. Uh, we'll often do a first seeding, which is lighter with only a few species. Then do weed control, and then follow up the next year with additional more conservative prairie plants. But Brad, I'd like to bring you in at this point. I know that you've had folks out there working on it, so please go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Ed. Yeah, thi- this was a tough one. Um, we did seed the last year in a drought, so it was the worst possible timing. And we do what's called the dormant season seeding, so that was done in the winter, and that's to mimic what Mother Nature does. It's puts those seeds down naturally. And the, the freestyle works those tiny little seeds into the ground. So, yeah, in a normal year, and we have done, you know, these seedings, I think we actually, uh, have done thousands, you know, we have done thousands of acres of, of, uh, prairie seeding. This one didn't catch right away because of the drought. The seeds didn't germinate, so then we met as a staff. As Ed mentioned, we had to, we're trying to hit this vegetation standard. Do we mow it? Do we not mow it? We chose not to mow it to give those young seedlings every opportunity to grow, and we are extremely limited with herbicide. We can't just. Put any kind of, even a special use herbicide, so there's things like, uh, Milestone and Transline that are effective at, at just targeting thistles, but we also have legumes in the seed mix. So we didn't have all the normal techniques available to us. We couldn't even burn it because it's not, uh, there's not enough cover to burn it. So, um, the other thing is, you know, we're looking at a five-year window where this is going to get up to speed, and we do have success. As we have time to treat these areas, so, you know, with the first year, and this is always the case, anybody will tell you that with a prairie restoration. They're always weedy, they're always messy the first year, and then as that, those prairie plants, um, grow and germinate, then you start turning the corner. And, um, we have adjacent seedings right at Goose Lake that are phenomenal, so. Yeah, we, we have to ask more time. Prairies just don't happen, uh, in a year, so it does take a little time, but we are addressing the weed concern.
Well, thank you. I mean, I, it's hard to respond. They're not knowledgeable or, or, uh. Or work in progress, and, you know, to the extent that you can maintain communication with him and let him know. Uh, that it's about the journey, that you're doing the best, perhaps you're doing the best you can.
Yeah, there is a great report that they were reporting, obviously, to the grant compliance, um, very extensive, um, and so, again, we have that historical record. It takes multiple years. Um, I'm happy to share that and advance that onward, um, to communicate our work. Um, you know, it is challenging, and I know even, we had another email that came in, not specifically, and I've spoken with Ed on teazle, as an example. Um, teazles everywhere in right of ways. Um, then if you go across the county down the roads, and some of the issues that may be in a prairie restoration, that mowers come in. Um, they transfer that seed to someplace else, and it just spreads, and so you're trying to solve in one area and it goes to another, so. Yeah, invasives are a challenge, um, and with our team and effort and tools, um. We're gonna do best we can and, and look towards to build, but as a neighbor, I can understand the frustration and appreciate, and, and, and why they reached out to us.
Well, I'm ready to return.
And I want to thank, just trying to make it to your, but I want to give it to our education team. They're in, and we have any camps, not only from our education services. But we have police camp, but we have hunter camp that's coming up, and so we kind of, those teams and, and camps, and they do it.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. Second.
Second. Right for me. Okay.
We're trying to get out within an hour. We want to be giant, any.
Presser's down.
Yes.
Pressy Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasurer Prince.
Yes.
Pressy Gaitan.
Yes.
President Cook.
Yes.
You did it.
Well, we all, we did it, we did it together, and Christie's editing those, uh, she can send the agenda, but it's a big difference.
Yes.
Okay.
Grants.
Good job.